Good morning. It is Tuesday, April 9th, 2024, and I'll call the meeting to order. Please stand if you are able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Been moved. Second, Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Agenda's adopted. Now is the time for public comment number one. The comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If anyone would like to make public comment, if you're online or in the public meeting room, please come forward. And seeing no rush, we will close public comment number one and we'll move on to agency reports. We have the Heartland Senior Services Annual Report, and we'll go ahead and combine that with the Heartland ARPA Annual Report as well. Good morning, Deb.
Good morning. Don't be afraid of them. Okay.
Yeah, the mic will sound really loud to you.
Okay.
When you have it, but it helps with pickup for online.
Okay, awesome. Well, good morning, Board, and thank you for this opportunity to talk about Heartland's activities the past year and our building project, which we will get to shortly. I do want to just kind of explain what the lay of the land has looked like the past 10 months with my joining Heartland last July. So Nancy Carroll, the Executive Director, has been working on the building project as well as fundraising. And my responsibilities have been evaluating our programs and looking at staffing and handling the day-to-day operations in anticipation of moving into the 60 Forward Center. And what that's going to look like is it will be different than what we've known before. And then collectively, Nancy and I have been presenting at different groups and out in the public about the 60 Forward Initiative and the vision that we're creating as a result of the new building. So that's what we've been doing the past 10 months. And so this is my first time in front of you as an agency representative to share what Heartland has been doing this past year. So you have the report and had kind of our statistics in each of our program areas. So our main programs continue to be nutrition, which involves Meals on Wheels and the Senior Food Program, the Commodities Program. And when the 60 Forward Center opens, we are going to reinstate congregate meals. We've, those had been canceled as a result of the pandemic. And because we don't really have a building right now, we couldn't find a really good location to start those back up. So we will do those congregate meals and, once the building is open. And we're looking at a couple of times a week just to kind of gauge need and interest to begin with. We also have Outreach, which is staff that visit individuals in their homes and help connect them with available and existing resources to meet their needs. And then our Adult Day Center. And so all these services have continued even though we don't have our own building. Adult Day has been provided at Green Hills. Meals on Wheels and Outreach have been co-located with RSVP on Crystal Street. And we've had some, some activities bingo and cards that we've had in different church locations in the community. So people could still be involved with things that way. So those, those services continue and will be added into the building once we do move. The one thing I would like to talk about, kind of focus on, is Meals on Wheels and Adult Days Center. So Meals on Wheels, prior to the pandemic, we saw an average of like 120 meals that were being delivered every day throughout the county. And when the pandemic set in, the homebound criteria, which is a criteria that we are required to follow through Aging Resources of Central Iowa, that criteria was, was broadened and just assumed that anybody 60 and older were going to be required to stay at home. And so we were serving more people, which meant more meals. And so we were upwards of 240 meals a day. During the pandemic, we had additional funding provided through Aging Resources to help with the expense of those meals. And of course, we use our volunteers to deliver those. So we expected to see a little bit of a drop since we're, we've moved out of the pandemic. And we're hovering still around 205 to 210 a day. So I think that that is reasonable to expect to continue going forward. We do a recertification every year required by Aging Resources. We go out and meet with each individual receiving Meals on Wheels to see that they still qualify. And of course, then we have new people being added throughout the year and then people that do go off because they no longer need them or they're in, moving into a higher level of care. And we have expended the county's funding for Meals on Wheels for the current fiscal year through, through the asset process. Adult Days Center, another exciting program of Heartland's. Because of our temporary location at Green Hills, we can only serve a maximum of 12 people in that space. So we have 12 people coming every day. We serve more people because not everybody is coming every day or even a couple of times a week. They have different schedules based on what their caregivers need. But we do have a waiting list of about 16 people right now. And what staff does is whenever we have a cancellation, they look at, if there's an existing person that wants an extra day, they'll, they'll plug that person in or they'll go to the waiting list and see if there's somebody who wants to, to come and have that experience. So we are trying to introduce new people to the, to the service as we move forward. And once we're in the 60 Forward Center, we do plan expanding the adult day to, to serve up to 24 people. We think that that could be a sweet spot for a while. We do have the, the space to serve up to 40 people and would need to significantly staff up to do that. But 24 is kind of our first benchmark that we, we want to, want to reach. As noted in the report, about 90% of the, the individuals that we're serving in that program have dementia or some kind of cognitive need. So staff is there supervising and, and providing appropriate programming to meet those needs. It's important to note that Adult Day Care is also for the caregiver because it gives them a respite and it gives them that time to kind of rejuvenate from the, the 24/7 caregiver needs. The other thing we want to do, once we move into the building, is expand caregiver support groups. We do have a small one that's, that's occurring right now at Green Hills, but that's just another component of the program so that caregivers have a place to go to share their experiences and help one another. And Lori Yocum-Whipple, our Adult Days Center Director, would be heading up those support groups. So we do want an expansion in those as well. Outreach, you can see in the report, we've served 722 unduplicated individuals over the course of the year. That is a service area where we've probably seen the most employee turnover this last year. Well, actually, this, last year going into this year. And so we, we have a three-quarters time person right now. We're looking at hiring if some, a full-time, a 1.5 FTE. So we can make sure and cover the additional needs and requests that we'll be getting as we move into the summer months. We do see increases happen when, when the months get a little bit warmer and people are a little more mobile and want to know what's available out in the communities. So like many other places, we're, we're experiencing those staffing, staffing issues. Facility update, and this will kind of dovetail with ARPA. So thank you again for the $300,000 in ARPA funds to help the 60 Forward Center come to a realization. This has been a facility that's been in need for a long time. And we're excited that we're on the cusp of, of it actually happening. To date, HPC, our contractor, is telling us the end of May as completion. And so we would spend the month of June moving in and getting acclimated with the space and look then for a ribbon cutting around mid-July. Of course, this is all subject to change if, if those, if that completion date needs, needs to move. But we're, we're very excited about the space. It's about 5,000 square feet larger than the prior building, but it's on the same, same location, 205 South Walnut. And we believe with the combination of programming that's happening through Parks and Recreation, Mary Greeley Medical Center and, and the Heartland programs that will really have a robust program offering for people to help their physical health, nutrition and social connectedness to, to one another and to others in the communities. So really broadening it just outside the walls of a building, but throughout the, the community and the, in the county. And I, I know there are things that the Board is interested in seeing in terms of expansion and doing more in the county that is brought into our plan and we've shared that with the Heartland Board of Directors as well as what's, what's needed outside of, of the city of Ames. So definitely on our, on our radar to explore, explore those opportunities as well. Any questions or comments?
Do you, do you happen to know how many of the Meals on Wheels participants are outside of Ames?
Yep, so about 70% of our total are Ames. So that's that 546 in that, and this was last year, last, or 2023. And so the unduplicated, yeah, the unduplicated would be the 260, representing the 14 communities.
Thank you. So just a couple of questions I have for you, Deb. So when you say June for move-in, is that just staff? Are you looking at having some of your, when are you looking at having participants in the building and programs?
Yeah, yep, very good question because we've got, our services can't, can't stop for a month, obviously. So yep, that's getting staff in the building, getting the bistro going, that kind of thing. But then we will continue Meals on Wheels during that time. And I believe Lori with Adult Day is looking at maybe a week, a week and a half closure to, to get the ADC room ready, get some extra training done for staff and then bring people in for. And that's a separate, separate room within the 60 Forward Center. It's a locked unit. So I think we can easily do that while the rest of the building is being moved into and arranged and that, that sort of thing.
And then my other question is if somebody wants to attend programs or just meet people, do they have to do an application process? Do they just like come on in and say, hey, I want to play cards with folks, you know, or something? What's, what's the process?
Yeah, yep. So you can just call. You can call Heartland. And, and that's kind of the beauty of, of, of what we're doing in terms of collaborating with the city of Ames Parks and Recreation and Department and Mary Greeley. So we're going to have a 60 Forward website. It's a combined website. And programs and services that are for 60 and older will all be funneled into that website. We'll have other information available about it too, if people prefer not to use the website. And so they can click on, let's say, yoga, and that'll take them to the Ames Parks and Rec Department's website. They can read about the yoga class. They can sign up directly with the city, but they can come to the 60 Forward Center for the class. And so depending on who's offering the program or the service, they can, they can go to, to that particular entity. But I, I think it's fair to say, especially with foot traffic and just people wanting to navigate things initially because it'll be confusing. And so we're going to have orientation around all of that. They can call Heartland and we can help walk them through. They could come down to the 60 Forward Center. We'll have a laptop there. We're going to have volunteers that we're calling ambassadors right at the front when they walk in the door in the atrium. And they can help them on the, on the laptop kind of figure out where, what they're interested in, where they need to sign up and navigate that. Because it's, it's different for people and we want to be able to, to help them understand how, how the new system is going to work. There's no membership fee. We get that question often. There's no membership fee to come into the 60 Forward Center. People can come in and, any age can come in and buy food or, or coffee or, or smoothie at the bistro. That's open to, to anybody. The programming piece though will be specific then to each of the partners. But we can help, we'll be there to help people answer those questions and help people figure that out. The bistro hours, at least for the, the foreseen future, will be 7:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. And the building hours will be 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. So we will have programming and activities going on in the afternoon, even when the bistro is closed. And we're looking at probably maybe after the first of, of next year, putting together special events. And so we could have a special event in an evening or a special event on a, on a Saturday morning, whether it's a game watch or celebrating like a St. Patrick's Day type of thing. But between our 60 Forward Coordinator and the bistro, we'll look at some kind of special events that we can offer to people to enjoy.
That's great. I'm glad to hear that the plan to expand support services for caregivers. I think we all have seen how important that is, either, if not in our own families, watching other people that we care about.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's a component that supports the family, the individual and one another. I think that's what we found in the, in a small group that's been meeting is the support that they can offer one another.
I think all you do, and I look forward to the tour.
Yeah, so yes, I, I am glad you brought that up because if you're interested in a pre-opening tour, just let me know and we can get something coordinated. Be happy to, to take you through before the doors open. So yeah.
Great, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Oh, one other, just note, the Senior Expo. So I'd be remiss if I didn't share a reminder about that. The Senior Expo is something that's organized by a group called Seniors in Story. It's a variety of organizations that serve people that are 60 and older. And the Senior Expo is on May 9th from 9 a.m. to 3 p.m., and that will be held at the Gateway Center. And we had the Expo last October. There were over 200 exhibitors. And I, I don't know what the count, but it was, it was packed all day, people coming through. There's a meal that's available and then there are sessions on like Medicare, ship counseling, just a variety of agencies that will, will offer little mini sessions on education and what they do. So if you need flyers, let me know. I can make sure those get pointed in your direction. But we're real excited about bringing this back and then probably keeping it in the spring going forward. So.
I know, I see it on Facebook and I try to share it on my personal page, just so people know. I know some of my neighbors have attended it and have really found it beneficial.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was a great showing last year. So okay, great, great. Thank you. Thank you again for, for your support and look forward to coordinating a tour if you're interested in that.
Look forward to that.
Right, alright.
Thank you. Moving on, we've got the City of Huxley ARPA Annual Report. Hi, David.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm David Hogan with the City of Huxley. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning to update you on our project. And thank you as well for the half million dollars that went towards our project. The project was kind of twofold. We put in a new well as well as doubling the capacity of our water treatment plant. And they're switching over to a new RO system. So, and I think the majority of the dollars coming from Story County and we're going towards the well fill. So just a quick update of kind of where we're at. I know this has been an ongoing project for some time. I think tonight is our 29th payment on the water treatment plant. So it's, it's approaching about two and a half years. Currently, the well project is approximately 73% complete. Our inspector from V and K met with the contractor at the end of February and to kind of go over the outstanding items. There hadn't been a lot of work done at the well field this past year. They were waiting for SIPCO to come in and they had to bring in some new electrical and things for the well. And that took some time. But the things that we have outgoing, or the things that we have left on that project, we've got a concrete pipe support, under piping in the meter manhole has to be done. Confirmation of an approved antenna connection from the new well field controls to the new water treatment plant controls by automatic systems. And then basically just overseeding the bare and/or damaged areas during construction. We anticipate this project hopefully being completed no later than May 1st of 2024. On the water treatment plant side, we're about 95% complete. Some of the remaining items, we're currently working on startup procedures of the equipment. There's training that's ongoing for our staff on how to operate the RO system, which is something new. We have, they have to be able to produce a consistent finished water quality that is similar to the current finished water. And they have to be able to do that for a week so we know that things are working properly. And then once we're satisfied that the new plan is working properly, then the contractor will decommission and take out the old components and, and equipment in the plant that will no longer be necessary. And they'll, and do, and then they'll have to install new finished water pumps and then basically some cleanup and seeding around that area as well. The hope is that we will be producing water sometime in May or June and hopefully have things. The latest estimate is to have that project complete around August, but that could go a little bit later. And part of the delay in that project was there was a delay in getting the motor control components that were necessary to run the system. Those were on backorder for somewhere around, I think, 15 months. So that's been kind of the delay in that project. But we're looking forward to getting that finished and wrapped up and continuing with the additional work that's happening in Huxley this year with New Bridge and the new interchange next year. So, but, but again, I would like to thank you again for your support on that project and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Let's, August 2024, right?
August the 22nd, four, yes. That's kind of the latest. Our contractor's been asking for an extension, which thus far we have not granted those extensions because we're incurring some additional costs. So we'll have some conversations with them when we're finished with that. So, but we're trying to push them to get it done and let us be on our way.
Sure, sure. I don't have any questions. Thank you for the update.
Thank you again for your support.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity to be here this morning.
Yeah, thank you. Next we'll have the Slater ARPA Annual Report.
Good morning, Jennifer.
Good morning. Good to be here and want to thank you guys for the support for our project. It was our, just to remind you, our project was the sewer treatment facility. We use the Contractor Gross Wind Technologies. This is a brand-new technology for, for the, for wastewater treatment facilities. It was, it ended up being after engineering cost and construction, just slightly over $8 million project. It has, it was completed last year in '23. Our City Council accepted the project in December of '23. And testing for the ammonia for the improvements, which is what, what we're required to build the facility for, we're exceeding those expectations immensely. In, in March, for example, the Iowa DNR allows 3.0 milliliters, milligrams per liter. And our testing was at 1.1. That's the first time in the almost year that we've been functioning that we actually have had, where it actually tested. Otherwise, it was non-detected at all, the ammonia was. So we are exceeding, exceeding expectations greatly. We're excited about the new treatment facility because this also will help us in the future for any, any expected things that are coming through the Iowa DNR for, for new regulations, which this facility will allow us to adapt quickly and inexpensively. So they're already doing testing for other things that Iowa DNR are expecting to come down the pike in the future for, for other things. So. Any, any questions at this point?
Sounds like you're, like it's working.
It is. It's working. It's, our Public Works says it's, you know, great to work with gross wind technology and the facility's easy to work, you know, work in. So.
Yeah, I, the technology is just fantastic. I'm so glad that you, you were able to take advantage of having them in your community and, and working with them because.
It's been a win-win for, for everybody.
Yeah, that's exciting. I'm glad it's working out well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Excuse me. Next, we have consideration of minutes. We have the April 1st, 2024, public hearing minutes, the April 2nd, 2024 canvas minutes, and the April 2nd, 2024 minutes, board minutes.
I'd move approval of all minutes as presented.
Seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Next is consideration of claims.
Move approval of claims as presented.
Second. Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Consent agenda.
I would move approval of consent agenda as presented.
And second. Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Now we're down to public hearing items. We have a discussion to vacate and clear the record of a portion of Story County Secondary Roads, 180th between 660th Avenue and 670th and 180th between 590th and 600th Avenue. Wow.
A little presentation here quick. Okay. What we have is a public hearing for possible vacation of two Level B roads. First, just little background on vacating roads. We have the power to vacate roads under Code Section 30610. Go ahead. There's another section here, 354.23, on vacating streets or public lands. Next one. Continue. The main thing I wanted to point out is the, the county may convey the vacant property through a vacation instrument, which we do by a resolution. We don't actually do deeds. So if we get to that point, we'll do it through resolution possibly next week. Follow statutory procedures and notify, notifying all the landowners. Through 30611 to 2.26, continue. This is the resolution the board passed. Again, we have two sections of road. Both are 180th Street, but Section 1 and Section 2. Proceed. Keep going. Anyone receiving the notice of this hearing may appear to be heard at this hearing. Only ones with valid claims are the ones with occupied homes on a budding land who will be landlocked by the vacation. And we don't have any of those instances in this case. So nobody has any valid claims, but we are still going to take input on whether we should vacate or not. The hearing will be opened in a few minutes and then we can open up for public comment and submission of claims for any damages, which there should be none. And then if there, anyone is landlocked, which is not the case here, there's a procedure for that. So the next step would be at next week's board meeting, we would have the resolution that actually vacates the road. And then we put a subject to the right of utilities on that road, continue possessed there easement along the road if that were to move forward. And we do have to notify or record this with the county auditor. Next slide. Any damage determination set of 20, 20 days, but there should be none. So we don't have to worry about that. Now initiation of this process was a little different than how we normally do it. Usually they're based off of landowners that want it vacated. This one is a little different. It was based through our department, based on complaints. And then we also watch these Level B roads to see if the land ownership changes to the point where nobody would be landlocked if we vacate the road. And if that happens, we'll bring it forward and try to get it vacated because it really serves no public purpose. We followed all the steps here. You passed the resolution. We've sent copies to the property owners, utilities and the DOT by certified mail. And we also published the hearing notice in the Ames Tribune. By certified mail and we also uh published the hearing notice names tribune. So now a little bit about the two sections of road we're talking about. This is the first one, one mile stretch south of Roland off of R seventy seven. And just north of E twenty nine. Next slide. This is a picture off of R seventy seven looking to the west. You can see the level B road maintenance sign here. Um, part of the reason we like to vacate these two is farmers typically over time start farming up right to the edge of the road. So the ditches disappear and drainage gets worse as they go. We also have trouble maintaining these level B road signs. Next slide. This kind of shows Google Maps from a couple of years ago. You can see the sign is gone. And that was where we got some complaints. The signs went missing. So people would go down the road, get stuck and complain. So some of the issues we deal with. Uh, next slide. One of the worst spots where it gets drainage becomes a real issue. These ruts are deep enough where you would get hung up with any type of vehicle. Um, even my vehicle would get hung up. Those ruts are so deep. There's not much we can do about it because of drainage. We can't get the water off the road because there's no ditches. Uh, next slide. Area view of that, you can see the water ponded in those areas. So people start driving around them. Lots of washers, dryers, junk gets taken down in these areas because people can't see it very well. So they dump junk. Uh, so that's another issue we deal with on these roads. Uh, next slide. This one is just kind of showing, the green is the right away line. These two darker lines are the, the wheel pass that people use and you can see it's getting farmed right up to the edge of those wheel pass. So they're, they're farming in the road right away, which should not happen, but they, it happens over time. So. The goal is we vacate this. Uh, it gets turned back to those landowners because then they can farm it if they want to. It, the center line of the road uh. Splits the road between the two property owners and it just reverts back to the adjacent property owners. Next slide. Um, this shows the property ownership. There's four property owners. They all have access off of these roads. Um, so nobody needs access and there will be nobody that's landlocked. The green line is a drainage district tile. I just wanted to kind of show you that. We still have the right to get in there to work on the district tile. If need be, uh, we don't need road right away to do that. Um, so we still have access through the drainage district. So that's this road. Move on to the second road. Also one hundred and eighty street just off of S twenty seven south of McCallsburg. A view off of S twenty seven looking to the east. Again, you can see the level B road maintenance sign. Uh, this one does have a house adjacent to a portion of it and I believe they do have a drive down here. I'm not sure what they use it for. Because their main accesses are off of here. Um, they'll still be able to use at least half of that to get down there. No change. Um. But uh it, they will have to work with the property owner on the other side to see if they actually want to tear up the road or not, or just leave it like it is. That's between them if it gets vacated. Um, this one kind of came up. This property owner here actually owns all the land on the north side. And then there's two property owners on the south side. So we're just dealing with three property owners here. Our new uh manure hose policy, this is one of the road crossings was going to go right here, but there are absolutely no ditches. So you could not get the tile deep enough or the, a covert to put in so they could run the hose through it. Because there's no ditches. So you couldn't put a covert in, it would be buried. And so that's where we started talking about, well, we'll just vacate the road. And you can lay your hose over the road and do whatever you want with it at that point. So that kind of spurred this one on and then we looked and realized land ownership had changed to the point where nobody would be landlocked if we vacated this road completely. So. Next slide. Again, lots of district tile in the area. You see that a lot on the level B roads because it's a wet uh area. The only way it can be drained is with tile. Um, that's why it went to a mud road because he, you just could hardly maintain the road. It's so wet. But again, we can access all these tile through the district records. Next slide. Oh, you can scroll through a bunch of these. Generally, when we vacate roads, there's a number of reasons, but oh, go back one. There you go. Uh. There's really no value except to join landlords of this property and it's really long since having identity as a county land. So that's why we'd like to get these vacated and off our system. So I will be recommending the board quit claim deed to adjacent properties and preserve the right to existing utility easements on the property. Um, but again, we'll base that off comments if we get any, if we want to proceed with that or not. So at this point, um, we can open up the hearing. We should probably do it in two parts, one and uh two. I did notice there is one person online that's, has interest in the second one that I have talked to. And he is in favor of the vacation, but we could probably open it up to him if we need to when we get to the second one. So at this point, I'll leave it to the board to open up the hearing for comments.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing and we'll start out with uh roads one eightieth. Between six hundred and sixtieth Avenue. I believe that's the first one that you had listed there, Darren.
Yeah.
Okay, if anyone would like to make public comment, if you're online, if you could do the raise hand so that we know it, or if you're here in the public meeting room, come forward. Yep, please come forward. We'll have you, um, it's all right. We'll just have her. Uh, you'll want to turn on the mic, state your name and address and then make your comment, please.
It's actually for the second one, but you said six sixtieth and that's the road that I live on, which is the second one.
I did one eighty and six sixtieth and then there's and six seventieth and one eightieth. Did I miss? Oh, it is one eightieth between six sixtieth and six seventieth. Sorry.
All comment on the second one.
Yeah, yep, nope, you're, you're right. My name is Elaine Axmer.
Okay, so you own all the property on the north side.
Yes, and I just wanted to say that I'm very glad this is happening. Um, we've seen, as you mentioned, lots of disposal of nefarious things. So very glad that that this is going to be closed off. Um, it's currently very wet. We've had to pull vehicles out before my husband has. So we are very glad this is happening and in full support of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't mention if we proceed with the vacation, landlords can put up a gate and keep people out. So that's a benefit to landlords in this situation.
Was there anyone else who wanted to speak on this first one? Yep, it looks like uh, is it Steven Peterson?
Yes, this is Steve Peterson. Hello?
Yep, did you want to make comment?
Yes, um, we're in favor of the vacation or vacating of the road also. As the previous person mentioned, there's a lot of mess. It, they get stuck in that road. Um, they tear up the farms when they do cookies trying to get out of it. Um, we've, we've been hoping that they do something, either do something with the road or vacate it for quite a while. So we're in favor of it also, if it makes any difference. Um, but I wanted to make that statement this morning and acknowledge that I did hear the, here, I did hear the presentation. And we're in favor of vacating the road.
Thank you. I appreciate your input. Hey, was there anyone else who wanted to speak in regards to the road one eightieth between six sixtieth and six seventieth? Looks like not. So we would go on to one hundred and eighty street between five hundred and ninetieth and six hundredth Avenue. If anyone wanted to make com- public comment. And not seeing any. So we can close the public hearing? And you said you would be bringing something forward next, next meeting then?
Correct. And landlords have the entire day to bring claims for damage to the board. So that's another reason we can't take action today. So you could receive something yet today, but uh if not, well, I'll put in a resolution on the board agenda for next week.
Okay.
And Darren, other than the landowners putting up a gate, is there anything else that would mark the road as no longer being maintained?
We would take the street sign down. Um. If it's a four-way intersection, the street sign will still need to be there. So that might not help in these situations. If it was a T, we'd take the street sign down. We'll take the level B road signs down. That kind of tells people it's a public road when they see that sign. So once that's gone, um, in combination with a gate, it's easier to keep people out.
Okay.
But that's about it.
Okay. Could like a private property sign be done or is that?
Yeah, they can do whatever they want outside the road right away of the, the highways there. Yeah.
So, okay. Thanks. Thank you. Um, and I guess we're still with secondary roads. We've got discussion and consideration of the five-year construction program needs.
Okay, yeah, we had a workshop a while back and discussed the five-year program. Um, just a couple of quick items to point out since that meeting. I received one comment on uh five tenth Avenue, kind of northwest of Ames. I'll bring that up during my quarterly report and give you a little background. It sounds like you might get a letter requesting paving. It's a grammar. That they request a short stretch paved on that, but uh. Uh, again, I'll bring that up at the quarterly report, show you what that's all about. So you can respond if you get a letter. And then I was going to comment on, uh, we're waiting on some results from historic bridge results. And right now they sound like neither bridge will be deemed historical, which is good news. We can proceed with our projects. Uh, but we should find out in the next week or so. If they, either one is historic, that's going to shuffle up our program quite a bit. But I just wanted to point that out. It's, does not sound like that'll be a problem. So that's good news. Um. Our program is on our website if anybody wants to check it out or the map. And then uh, did just want to note, the House File seven eighteen had an impact on our due date of the five-year program. Um, they actually moved it back a month to May fifteenth uh to allow, because our budgets are due later now. But the D O T pushed it back to April fifteenth because they have to have the federal portion in on April fifteenth. For the, there's a stip and a tip program. They call them that the state puts out for federal aid. And those are due on April fifteenth. So the D O T is still requiring us to have our program in by the April fifteenth. So that did not change from the past. So that's all I have on that. I recommend approval of the five-year program.
Any questions?
No, just, uh, well, yeah, I guess one. When, when do you think you'll hear for sure about the bridges?
In the next week or two. Yep, they were getting close, but uh they just let us know. It did not sound like either one would be historic.
Great. I have no other questions. Uh, I would move approval of the five-year secondary road construction program.
Second, been moved and seconded, Basil.
Aye.
Haddon's, aye, is approved. Okay, now discussion and consideration of the fifth year twenty five Iowa Department of Transportation secondary roads budget.
Okay, uh, we have, as you know, two budgets. We have a county budget and a D O T budget. Um. The House File seventeen did not affect the due date of our D O T budget. So that's still due on April fifteenth. But the one thing we kind of found out about, we've always operated in most counties, did, do with the assumption that your D O T budget had to match your county budget. D O T says they do not need to match. So even if we approve this today and the board has to change something um on the local budget after that. We don't have to go back and amend it because they don't have to match, which um is good for a couple of reasons. So I'll get to one. Another reason in my quarterly report on uh amendments, we may have to amend our D O T budget, but not the county budget for some reasons. But uh, so that's a little bit of new information. But other than that, um, nothing's changed in the budget since our uh budget hearing meeting. So. Uh, I recommend approval of our budget.
Any questions?
Oh, I would move approval.
It's, here's the motion to approve. Um, I'll second Basil.
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
And I guess we'll see in a few more minutes.
Yep.
Uh, next we'll move on to discussion and consideration of adding privacy glass to workstations and general assistance. Good morning, Joby.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
We're going to talk about general assistance today. You see in my memo, I, uh, Aaron Reverts reached out to me a few weeks ago about uh trying to private make their two um. Reception work area, I guess, if you're familiar with that building, um, workstations. More private because they got a lot of traffic that comes down the hallway and it can be disruptive. Um. Those two workstations are fixed in place. They're kind of like little islands in there. And all the utilities called the communications, internet and electric come up through the concrete floor to feed those. So. Removing them and replacing them with cubicles was not really a feasible option with the realistic cost to it. So we kind of looked at similarly to what we're doing with the front counter barriers here at this building. And um, since we don't really need a high level, you know, we're not looking for a security aspect to it like we did in this building. Because they're already behind a secured front entry. Um. We're just looking at, you know, like frosted glass. So um. You can see in the one picture, it's, there's brackets that mount on the top of the workstations that hold the glass. And then the glass would go up three feet above the um. Kind of like, it's real similar to that wing on the, your desk there. Um, be like that same height and then go up three feet. So give it about a little over seven feet off the floor and then frosted glass on the hallway side. And then part frosted glass between the two workstations, but then clear glass on the end so that they could see customers come in the front door. And that, that option was a little less than half the cost of doing like the extruded aluminum framework. And then um. You know, like in the request, um, most likely my operating budget for that facility would be able to absorb that cost. But I would ask that we have Lisa Markley include that six thousand dollars into the budget amendment she's working on. For the end of this F Y, just to make sure that we had funds to cover it. In case something unforeseen comes up for that facility. And Aaron is on Zoom if you have questions.
So just looking at the picture here, so this is the hallway.
Yep.
That goes down. So are you looking at doing the front?
Yep, and then around that backside too.
Are you looking at having a door down here too or no?
Just uh on the backside of that workstation.
Right.
And it, it dives back in just like this front we're looking at. And it's real short too, and it would still be open. On the work side so they could walk back and forth. It's just glass sitting on top of that half wall.
Gotcha, gotcha. And then again through.
Yep, T on, that one's kind of a T. And then, yeah, on both ends and then in the middle, divide the two workstations.
Based on the, the other design of Plexiglas, is this, would this be more permanent like what you've got?
Yes.
In these areas here, so not just the, the um, what do I want to say? The um, temporary.
Yeah, this would be a, a permanent um install with the um special glass that's designed to self-support. Basically.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Wouldn't that be, would you work with the same folks that are already doing?
No, we're looking at um, I got a couple of people, estimates from a couple of different contractors. And this would be a different contractor than the one we're using on this project.
Okay, okay. I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Those were finally questions.
Uh, I would move approval. Um, did you want to add that? Did you, are you going to talk with Lisa about doing a?
Yes, yeah, she's, she's already reached out to all of us about.
Okay, need that in the motion?
Yes, I would like it in the motion.
Okay, um, I would move approval and.
To, to include a. Yes. For the cost of the work to be included in the F Y twenty four budget amendment. I will second that. Basil.
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we'll go back to Secretary Rhodes' engineer quarterly report.
Okay, um, let's start. Okay, um, let's start out on the maintenance side of things. Uh, it's been. Quite an unusual winter with the warm temps and pretty low precipitation. I do need to point out some issues that that did cause, uh, for as good as it was, it did cause one issue for us. With the rock getting uh, bladed into dishes and stuff. This is the big first snow event we had of the two this winter. You can kind of see the darker areas in the snow. That is rock that's get, getting thrown off when we plow the road. We typically try to leave an inch or two on the road and then it gets compacted in. You can see a couple of areas where it got scalped down a little bit further, but that throws rock off into the ditch areas. Go ahead. Um, this was the last snow event we got, so a couple of weeks ago, and you can see how, this is before the plow hit it. And it melted a lot. Early in the morning, we had six to eight inches of snow. It gets that deep. We almost have to send motor graders out to try something. As mixed up as it got, we, all we could do was go really slow and just kind of blade it off to the side without throwing it in the ditch. We would have lost an incredible amount of rock. Downside of that is we had some big piles of snow kind of roll up on the side of the road, but. Fortunately, it warmed up quick enough where it melted off within a day or two, but uh. These are the conditions we deal with sometimes out there and it, you can see even traffic alone, we're throwing rocks just from the slop. Um, so it uncontrollable sometimes. Next slide. The vast majority of the areas kind of look like this. You can see the white rock in the, thrown off into the ditch. Hate to see it, but it's almost unavoidable in the conditions we had. The roads did not freeze. And we had a lack of moisture, so one, the roads get moisture and freeze solid, it helps the rock stick. And the operators can feel if they ever hit it, they'll feel hitting the hard pan, but they, they couldn't feel it at all. It would go right into the road and just throw the rock. Next slide shows you a little bit worse area, where we do have some areas where it's about white. That is rock, it's not snow. Really not economical to try to retrieve that. It doesn't amount to a lot when you dig it out. Um, and you'd pull up a lot of dirt and sun and it just isn't worth retrieving, it just looks really bad. All counties throughout the state had the same problem this year. Next slide. Now some areas that we did go help out on pavements. Where the shoulder rock gets hit with the wing and gets thrown in, that is rock there, this is snow. If it's a closely mown area on a pavement. That's a little more avoidable. We had a brand new operator that got the wing down too far and threw rock out there, so. We do have handheld paddle retrievers. It's a lot of work to out and retrieve some of that rock out, but we. Had to do a lot of this kind of mostly northwest Ames area. It happens every year, but this one was just worse than most and a lot more complaints this year than in the past. Next slide. We did, uh, we're in the process of trading in our motor graders for the new ten that we're getting. Uh, this is one of the new ones, pretty close to the same, uh, look to them. Uh, next slide. This go around, we did have to add the snow equipment of the wing here. We went. One or two rounds reusing those, um, but it, they got to the point, they're getting old enough, we needed new ones. And this rear connection, for some reason, on the past two was a little weak and it would bend. A lot of stress put on that wing in the back, so we had to reinforce the old ones, but. This new version, they reinforced it, so that should not be an issue. Um, there's a front uh, plow and everything. We're reusing those, so we did not get new ones of those. Those last a lot longer. That's a twelve foot long wing. Later on in the report, when I talk about obstructions in the right away, like big rocks. This is why we don't want them for our equipment. If it were to hit that, um, it'd do a lot of damage uh, to the motor grader. Uh, next slide. We should have all ten new ones, I think, by next week and we'll be uh, done with that process and getting paid for. We're doing the rock hauling contract started this week on Monday. The green lines are the ones we're hauling to right now with our contract rock haul. I think it's around six hundred and fifty thousand. This is on the far east end of the county, so the haul costs are, are pretty high when we get that far away from the quarry, so. Um, that's, that's the amount of roads you get for six hundred and fifty thousand, um, and the broad costs keep going up, so. Uh, we're getting, getting what we can. Uh, construction project update, uh, we've got everything let for the year. Got some good prices on our asphalt projects. It was a good year. We almost four million dollars with the asphalt we let and. Saving hundreds of thousands if we would, would have let it last year compared to this year, so it was a good year to have that uh, big asphalt letting. The Palestine fifteen bridge is the only one that's currently under construction. This is the old bridge that we're replacing. Um, go to next slide. Pretty good progress. Um, all the wood piling are just uh, false work uh, to put the forms on to build the new structure. There's two concrete piers and they're starting to form the deck on one side and the abutment is poured. Um, we got that row piling driven last week, so all the piling are driven. They should pour that concrete this week, so. They're making good progress. Had a pretty good winter to get some work done. Uh, moving on to construction project design. No change, but just a reminder, we're working on this project with the city of Maxwell. They replaced two bridges on the city limits line on three hundred and twenty fifth. And then secondly, the. We talked a little bit already about the two bridges that we were a little concerned could be historic. We just found out last week, but things are looking good. Hopefully they won't be, but uh, that should not be an issue. This is one of them. Over the Skunk River on a hundred and fiftieth street and uh, go to the next slide for the second one. This is Nevada two, um, on two hundred and twentieth street. Uh, moving on to Lincoln Highway Bridge Deck Patching. We just found out today that's probably going to start next Monday. That is, oh, it's a little hard to see the roads on this one, because the roads are in white, but it's, it's right here. East, two miles east of Nevada where the road bends. We call it the Iron Cross area. So that'll be closed for about two weeks, completely closed day and night. And so we'll have a detour out on thirty over to Colo to go around. We may get a little more traffic on a couple gravel roads here, so we may have to put some dust control down, but hopefully not. Once people learn about it, they shouldn't go around and use the detour route, the Colo traffic anyway.
Is, is the detour gonna cross the railroad?
It will cross, um, the SS twenty seven here, but. It'd be like any other time it's blocked. Traffic will just have to go around through Nevada, but it's always a problem, I'm concerned. Federal aid transportation bill, not a lot to update you on that. The one main thing is, we did get the SS four A safety grant. We met last week and our consultant did, they kind of put us in groups. We are in the first group. So our workshops will take place in September and October of this year. Those will be pretty much all day workshops, eight thirty to two, so I'll start uh, looking for times. To get that set and we invite Board, Sheriff's Office, um, a lot of different partners just to talk about. Safety of our entire system, so that will happen this fall. Uh, the twenty four bu, FY twenty four budget status. Like I said, the mild winter's been good for our budget. We've spent a little less than half of our overtime budget, uh, so we saved some money there. Uh, we did have a couple of items that overran, engineering uh, for bridges overran a little bit. And then the unplanned E twenty three pile boring project due to the drainage district project out there. We did find out that's right around seventy five thousand dollars, so that was unplanned, but at this point, it doesn't appear we'll have to amend. Cause we have some extra uh, but leeway there from the tandem trucks that won't be delivered this year that were budgeted this year, so. Shouldn't have to do a county amendment, but we may have to do a DOT amendment. There's some. Uh, different rules on overrunning with the DOT, but that's not a big deal. Uh, moving on to the, the important item, this report is the House File seven eighteen implications for roads. Uh, the bill was passed last year and it's impacting how the county sets our levy rates, which I'm sure you're aware of. Um, there are some unintended consequences. I assume they were unintended, but uh, we didn't realize. Uh, till we got into our budgets that uh, how it could impact the county road budgets. Uh, due to limitations placed on levy rates in the future years, it may force a number of counties to drop below the seventy five percent. Minimum local effort. What that does, it will take money away from our foreign to market account. The, the amount we go under the seventy five percent, the DOT takes the same amount out of our foreign to market account. And gives that to other counties. That's not a huge amount, but the bigger deal is the foreign to market account being frozen. Um, that's about a million and a half per year for us. If that gets frozen, that's a big deal. And not only it'll get frozen, but if you, you can only carry over three years worth of your balance. And if it goes beyond that, that money will be distributed to the other counties as well. And we also use that foreign to market account to uh. Put our federal aid projects through to fund them until um, the feds can reimburse our foreign to market account, so that would be locked out as well, so. That is a big, big deal. You've seen this slide before. Um, this is where we're at near the seventy five percent level, which is about here. We're bumped up a little bit. Cause of that extra two hundred and fifty thousand that we have from lost money. Was talking to Sandra about this last time we met, and she pointed out in other counties in similar situations. Go to the next slide. She asked about Scott County, which was a good example. They're down here as well. Couple of things about Scott. They're a little bit smaller county. They do have a bigger budget, about a million dollar bigger budget than us, and they have. They only have five hundred and sixty two miles of roads, where we have nine hundred and twenty one, so they have about less than half the amount of roads. So they have a little bit more leeway, but they are also very concerned and um, they're almost all funded. They don't, uh, Woodbury County has a lot of local options, sales tax money, which is what the state really wants to see. Um, fund in other ways and so, is why they're at the seventy five percent level. And they've met with the legislature one on one and. At this point, legislature is not gonna do much about it, and I don't quite understand that, because that's what they want to see, fund roads in other ways if possible. Uh, to bring down levy rates, but uh. But Scott, I talked with Scott and then she put together a, a good list of items there trying to work on with the legislature. And the County Engineers Association has put a committee together, um, that she is on. Uh, from the executive board. Uh, go to the next slide. This kind of summarizes what I just said. This is a slide the DOT put together for our ISAC meeting. Again, um, this will be saved on the S drive if you want to get back to this, to look at this on your own. Again, this is the big one. The county should not use foreign to market funds. While they can't be used, there's no restriction on accumulation of the funds that goes into the foreign to market. However. We can only accumulate three years and then it gets redistributed. I am just trying to run some rough numbers. I am showing about. We might drop about a hundred and fifty thousand per year from this point on. So next year we should be fine, because we got that two hundred and fifty thousand of lost leeway. I think it's gonna be the year after that, we might drop below that level. Go, next slide. The committee that's been put together met with uh. Some of the upper level legislators and these are the three ideas they came up with on how we could somewhat alleviate the issues. Number one, the legislature could direct surplus income taxes to backfill the counties that can't generate the sufficient property tax. That doesn't fix the foreign to market problem, foreign market fund problem, which is the bigger issue in my mind. Um, that just fixes the, those small funds we lose if uh, we didn't meet the seventy five percent. Um, they commented. Definitely no legislation uh, this year, uh, but possibly next year. But all the comments coming back from legislators are that there's more than likely, they're just gonna wait it out and make some counties. Get into that bad situation and before they will take any action, so that's the unfortunate part. It does not sound like they're gonna uh, prevent this from happening, but they'll react to it once it does happen. The second one, allow redistribution of road use tax fund dollars. Uh, but create language that does not enforce the foreign to market letting restrictions. Um, so that's the important one I'd like to see. Again, will not happen this year, but maybe next year. And the last one, it's an interesting one, uh, separate the levy for secondary roads. Right now, the levy for us is not separated out. Um, we do it separated out to calculate our seventy five percent, but it's not very visible to the public. So there's a proposal to break that out to show um, just our levy separate from the rest. Uh, for more transparency. Um, again, that would have to wait till next uh, session. And they made a comment, if either two or three went forward, we would have to consult with other ISAC affiliates. I'm sure we're not in conflict with um, their priorities. Now, a couple of ideas I threw in for us, how we could maybe make up that difference. Again, I'm, I'm predicting it in the second year out. Um, we could maybe use some more of the lost funds to meet the seventy five percent. Um, that would keep us above the seventy five percent level. The other thing, Lisa's not here, but I think some other departments may use a rule supplemental. To pay for some benefits in the county. I know a lot of other counties do this. Um, if we did that, we could pull. I think it's a considerable amount in our budget. It might be four, five hundred thousand we could pull out. And if we, the other thing I'd have to check on is if we levied for it in another fund, if we could use that towards the seventy five percent. Cause it would be, I think we probably could, but that might be another option, but those are the only two I could think of. But otherwise, our hands are pretty tied on the levy rates, what we can actually do to prevent this from happening, so.
Yeah, House File seven eighteen is really impacting. A number of areas in county government, city government as well. We know, or kind of what we're anticipating is next year will be the more challenging year. As those rates continue to go down, I've heard that the legislature is looking at next year to do more property tax relief. Um, what that will look like, uh, so your comment of, are they gonna wait till some counties are in dire straits to do anything? It kind of seems that's the direction unfortunately that, that they're going. So yeah, we're just gonna have to be really mindful. As we move forward and with any budgeting, our budgeting for next year of what that's, what that's gonna look like.
And I believe the bill goes through FY twenty nine currently. And then what happens after that, yeah, who knows? So, so if we do end up getting locked out of the foreign to market account, it's, it's important. When it gets released, because we're gonna start actually losing the money at that point.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's hard to know what's gonna happen. Um, you also, it's hard to anticipate kind of that politically of. Whomever's in charge, if they want to be seen as potentially raising property taxes. Or not, that unfortunately factors in versus, this would be good governance and this is how you provide essential services to people.
And wasn't there a question though about with our new maxes, whether that was going to change what that seventy five percent? Was?
Then, what do you mean by new max?
Our new, our compressed max.
Oh, it, it, that could be dropped as well at, at this point. I mean, that's in the code. Our seventy five percent is of potential, not of what they scale it back to. So that's the problem. They keep, our potential is gonna keep going up with valuations.
Right.
Um, and there's no, we talked to legislature about that, ti- tying the two together and they're. Had no interest in doing that, so, but yeah, you'd think that would make sense tying together. had no interest in doing that. So but yeah, you'd think that would make sense tying together. So if you drop one, you drop our requirements as well, but that that's not even being discussed. Um, next slide. Okay. So I'll move on to some DOT construction projects. The E sixty-three bridge over I thirty-five, which is right here. The bridge is actually in the city limits of Huxley, the county takes over just uh to the east of it. But it's removed pretty much for the entire year. So detours down um highway two ten and over. A lot of school traffic goes between Huxley and Cambridge. Unfortunately, the thirteen school buses are all taking the gravel road up. I wish they wouldn't do that, but I talked to them about it and they said that's what they're going to do. So getting a lot of additional traffic on five seventieth gravel. The DOT is placing dust control down for that for us, but uh a lot of additional traffic on five seventieth. And as soon as this gets done late this fall, they're going to close highway two ten bridge and that'll be closed pretty much all next year. And that'll be the bigger deal because that's how the entire town of Huxley gets to the interstate. So they're going to have to go down sixty-nine or do something else, but um that'll have a little bit more impact next summer. Uh, next slide, work has resumed on five eightieth interchange. They've got everything graded for all these local connection roads. This year we'll be paving them. Um, they skipped grading through the the current highway here in these two spots so we could keep that open. But at some point, they're going to have to close those down to grade it and then pave over it. So art, we expect R seventy to be shut down for a considerable amount of time. There's no good detour for that road. It goes all the way down to Cambridge and over. So there's no short detour. So we're going to see a lot of gravel road traffic in this area as well. And the same thing north, they're going to have to shut that down. It's all kind of staged. We don't know when the stages are going to happen at this point, but uh the summer will be the summer of a lot of closures in the area, unfortunately.
Is it possible to put up a sign that said, not the county's fault? Call the DOT.
Yeah. Should have one of those because it seems like every year the DOT has a project that impacts our roads considerably. Um, the last one is the S fourteen stub road. Go to the next slide. As you know, the new bridge here is done and that road is open. I think as of tomorrow, this stub to get on S fourteen onto highway thirty will be shut down permanently. They're going to remove that concrete, so traffic is going to have to travel across and come back down that way. Unfortunately, we're overlaying S fourteen this summer, so all our asphalt trucks are going to have to come into town and go back down. So they're not going to be real happy about that, but that's going to be the future of that intersection. It'll be a lot safer. Just a little inconvenient for northbound if they want to go westbound on highway thirty. Uh, we already discussed the five-year construction program um that was approved today and uh talked a little bit about the one comment since our uh public workshop, we this is the winery out here on West one ninety. It curves, this is a closed bridge here, so it's a closed road. So the pavement curves north and ends right about right here. This is the stretch of gravel that they're requesting being paved. It's been on our wishlist for a number of years, but these two houses are pretty much brand new of last year. This one's been there of five years, five, ten years and same as this. I think one of the things that's spurring uh this letter to pave is I looked at the assessments on these two homes in particular. Um, they went from six to seven hundred thousand to one point three million. They they doubled in valuation. Probably why they're requesting their road paved. Um, I think this one's at one point seven million. I'm not sure what that one's at, but uh unfortunately, these were really old. I think they call them woodlots, so they existed a long time ago. Um, so when it was subdivided for houses, at that point, we usually make them donate extra right away to bring the road up for improvements. Because they were old woodlots, that did not happen. So we're limited on right away to improve the road for paving. But I think we could squeeze it in. This whole road was built that way. Unfortunately, it wasn't brought up to a current standard for paving because it was, it was a research project. It's about twenty years ago. They brought in a special piece of equipment from Europe to inject asphalt in the base. So we got a really good base and it wasn't really meant to be paved at that point. But over time, of course, it ended up getting paved with the thin lift of asphalt, but it's got a really good base. This stretch does not have a good base, so it's going to take a much thicker lift of asphalt. And we don't have very wide road there to you can pave it once, but you 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 keep raising your asphalt over time and have to widen out. You won't have that room. So that is a concern, but it costs probably about a hundred thousand to pave what they're going to request to be paved. And we can't go any further north because you can't pave these curves. They're really sharp, uh create a kind of a dangerous situation. So.
Are those curves rock right now?
They're, yeah, those are rock section, but uh just wanted to give you a little background because I think you'll get a letter. They're going to provide a response to and one, our FY twenty-five. This will be local funds only. It's a local road, so we can only use local funds to pave it. So we're pretty much set through FY twenty-five, so you could tell them, we'll talk about it next year's five-year program work session and see if we want to include it, but.
So is part of the problem that we we don't have right of way? Is that part of it, other than the cost of paving?
Sure. Ti- I just wanted to bring that up because typically I would not want to pave this without bringing it up to current standard. But because this whole stretch is the same way, not brought up to standard, I think I would probably go along with just paving it as is.
Okay.
But normally I wouldn't, because that's going to cause problems down the road, but we have already got that problem through here, so just add to it, I guess.
Show again, so how far is it paved?
We overlaid this just a couple of years ago and it was only paved at this major subdivision road. But when we did it, I did extend it past these two driveways because it wasn't much extra distance. And since we did that, these new houses went in, so it's paved to about right here.
Yeah, we went for a discussion on paving. You'd go from where it's currently paved up to.
About right here before the curve, yeah. And I forgot to mention too, last year as part of the side town construction, we got some free asphalt millings from the old parking lot. We did place them on here as a kind of an experiment to see how they'd hold up. They're a little less dusty. The downside is they tend to washboard a little bit quicker because it's got the asphalt kind of tries to bind together and it makes for some rough conditions. So we had to blade it more often. They dust control the stretch, so combination asphalt and um dust control, it's held up all right, but I just got a call from them again yesterday. They are not in favor of the asphalt milling, so they don't want to see them put down again. We have more in a stockpile. We were going to beef it up before they put dust control down again this year, but they don't want to see anymore because it it's a, it creates a black dust. It and then it gets on the vehicles and it's more visible is the main thing. So we tried to experiment to help them out with dust control with that, but they don't want to see that again. So they're just going to go straight dust control and we may put, mix a little bit more limestone in with it for the time being, but just wanted to point that out. We we tried something, but they don't seem to like it and it's not the best. It just, it did help with dust though. Uh, moving on to dust control, just talked about uh dust control. There are applications for this year. April thirtieth, they're due indoor vendors if you want dust control for the two applications that are done this year. Uh, drainage district projects, just wanted to touch base on the DD eight project has been let at the Boone County line. That's the one that includes the tile boring project of seventy-five thousand under E twenty-three. Whether or not that's going to happen in time to come out of this fiscal year or not, uh yet to be seen. It could go either, either side of July first, but uh there's also been a request in the developer agreement out there, they were supposed to put a turn lane in at E twenty-three where it abuts R thirty-eight. It's a right turn lane for northbound traffic. That's right where this tile boring project's going and they're going to have to dig deep bore pits and they're in conflict with each other. And so the developers ask, going to ask if they can delay that till phase two of the development. And I'm fully supportive of that. The traffic really isn't great enough right now to warrant that turn lane until the second phase anyway. So I think that might come from P and D as a request, but I'm supportive of delaying that till phase two of the development project out there.
And there's not any risk of that undoing any of the work that for the drainage district project?
No, it's going to disturb a lot to get it in and once it's in, then they can wi- widen out that turn lane over the top of it. And so, yeah, once it's in and done, we should be good, but we don't want them both going at the same time. Um, had a couple of recent retirements, Roger Holland, motor grader operator on McCallsburg and Steve Johnson, our longtime crew leader out of McCallsburg, uh both retired. We did recently fill both those positions in-house. So we'll be left with two entry-level positions to fill this summer. Uh, we are getting some summer, uh temporary summer help applications in, so we should be able to hire at least three to help us uh mainly with our mowing this summer. And lastly, I wanted to touch on the rock situation with um Mr. Ron Lyon. We sent him a violation for this rock that was put right here. And this is kind of where I go back to the the wings on the motor graders. We get a lot more snow blowing out in the rural areas and this type of stuff can get covered up pretty easy and you don't, can't see where they really are. So hitting stuff like this with the wings will damage our equipment. And it is in a uh bad spot as far as the curve. I'll show you that in the aerial photo, but go ahead to the next slide. These are the rocks the neighbor put in adjacent to that. And so we sent them a letter this winter getting those removed because they're well within that twelve feet of our wings for our snow plows and they create a hazard. That's where we put that obstructions policy in place, the ordinance that was about twenty, twenty years ago to prevent stuff like this hazards. If somebody goes off the road, you don't want to hit a rock that big. And it's gets in the way of our snow removal equipment. So this person uh abided and removed the rocks immediately, so that was nice. And then we noticed that the rock on the adjacent property was still there, so we sent him a a notice of the same thing. Go ahead to the next slide. That's the location of that rock right there. So as you come around this curve, that's about exactly where you would go off if you overran that curve a little bit. He says he's protecting his building, which it was his choice to build that building that close to the road right away. We we have setbacks, but I think he met some sort of farm ag exemption. So he put it right up next to the road right away. This is where those other rocks were placed. Um, and those have since been removed. So, yeah.
I was just wondering, do you have a sign that says like curve ahead or?
Yeah, all of our curves that sharper sign with the curve sign, yep.
It's hard to tell from an aerial.
Yep. Um, so, yeah, we were requesting that be removed. You can see he's, he's had these wood planks in here for a long time within the road right away. We've just kind of let those go. They aren't a real obstruction for vehicles. Uh, we could hit them with the snow plows, but we're more concerned about damaging private property than damage to our equipment. So we've let those go over time, but the rock is just a little bit too much for safety. Uh, go to the next slide. I just wanted to point out, if you do talk with Mr. Lyon, this is the driveway I worked with him on about two years ago. Originally, I told him um that we did not want a driveway there. There's a huge drainage area that comes down right here and bends through there. The ditch is not deep enough um to allow the culverts the size that would pass that water through. So what the water backs up and over tops the road and washes out the driveway, which I warned him of, but he insisted it go in there, so I did allow it. There's like three or four pipes under the driveway to try to accommodate it, but it's been washed out already. So he's reinforced it with rock, that's why it's white, and he put a bunch of riprap on the sides to try to protect the drive, which is was originally obstruction because it was up too high. We had to push it down uh so we didn't hit it with our snow plow wings. But that's the driveway I was talking about that I did work with him on and install in case that comes up in your discussions with him. But uh, we would really like to see that rock removed for safety and uh protecting our equipment.
Is your new machinery are, is it larger?
No, it's the same size it's always been, yeah.
And the driveway that you worked with, I mean, where does the driveway go to?
I believe there might be building a house up here.
Gotcha.
Yes, because he did have a
Like a
An existing drive here.
That's what it looks like, so.
Yeah, there's a a long lane that goes to something up there. I can't remember what it was.
Gotcha, okay.
Um, I believe that's all I have today. Any questions?
Is, is there anything that can get mixed in with the gravel? Or, I mean, are there any technologies or anything so that when the road is not holding it?
Well, dust control most of the time holds it down tight, so where people do get dust control, it's kind of a binder. It holds it down in the summer. The bad thing is when you saw that sloppy, wet snow, that dust control also attracts the moisture and made the dust control spots an absolute mess on that day. They were way worse than the rest. So it works both ways. But there, there are some treatments similar to the dust control that counties or vendors try to promote it. Boone County tried some on the, just off the county line about five years ago and it didn't even last the one season and it so there's things out there that they promote, but they don't work real well and that we just had a unique situation where the roads didn't freeze solid like they normally did too, so it's not normally as big of a problem as it was this year. But, no, and then we've got seven hundred and twenty miles, so anything you do, multiply it by that distance is a be a lot of money to do anything with too, so.
That was my only, my only question.
Right, thank you.
All right, any upcoming agenda items? No. Uh, now's the time for public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take action on the comments due to the requirements of open meeting law, but may do so in the future. If anyone would like to make public comment, you may do so. And not seeing any, we'll close public comment number two. Uh, liaison assignments, community outmates and announcement supervisor Faisal?
Uh, yeah, I've got a women in leadership uh meeting first thing tomorrow morning and then I will be out for the rest of the morning, taking my mom to a doctor's appointment. And then I have um a couple of meetings in the afternoon. I will be uh on KHOI next week, so I'll be sending out an email asking for anything, any announcements. Be sending that out here pretty soon. Um, and then Thursday and Friday, I'll be at the Rural um summit. And then it looks like we also have a county attorney's office recognition on Friday. And Monday, I have a Naco Arts and Culture Commission meeting in the afternoon and a meeting in the morning. That's it.
Hey, I have a debris site, city debris site visit. Boy, say that three times fast.
Yeah.
This afternoon. Um, and then I have a ARC meeting. Uh, tomorrow I have a Naco uh workforce meeting. I also have on my calendar that we have the Story County Conference Board meeting tomorrow night at five thirty.
Oh.
That's their budget hearing uh Thursday and Friday. I will also be at the Iowa Rural Summit, um, attending the attorney's office recognition and then on Friday. And also I have a DCAT uh meeting in the afternoon and I think an interview as well. And then Monday, need to look at that real quick. Monday next week, I do have, it looks like an interview, then I'm at the um uh, I'm at a community Uh, I'm at a community health work group at Mary Greeley the rest of the morning. Then I have a lunch meeting and then I have an afternoon meeting at Ames. Uh, Tuesday I will be leaving and I'm just saying that for now is I will be in DC. Uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday next week, so I'll, I will zoom into the Tuesday meeting, but I won't be here personally. So somebody else will have to chair it on, on Tuesday. And that's all that I have on my calendar. And if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And second, Faisal.
Hi.
Edens, hi, we are adjourned.